We'll do.
Dennis, you okay with that? Eric?
That's a good sign.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, special city council meeting for the city of San Dimas is convened. The June 15 meeting of the city council meeting, excuse me, will be conducted pursuant to provisions of governor's executive order N 2920. Pursuant to the governor's executive order dated March 17, 2020, the city council is authorized to hold public meetings via teleconferencing and to make meetings accessible electronically to all members of the public seeking to observe and to address the legislative body. All Brown Act provisions that require the physical presence of city councilmen or public for the city council meetings are waived. Do we have a city clerk tonight?
Mr. Mayor, no, the city clerk is not available tonight, so we will take oral call.
Okay, you will take oral call?
The city attorney is going to take oral call today.
Okay. Mr. Mahoney?
Councilmember Bertone.
Here.
Councilmember Weber. Councilmember Ebner.
Here.
Mayor Protem Vienna.
Here.
Mayor Bedar.
Here.
We have all members present.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're having a little bit of technical difficulty, guys, please wait a couple of minutes. No, probably, John, it's probably not used to you being here. I think that's better. I plugged it into another, because John is in the back there, plug it into another chapter. Sorry for the technical difficulty. We'll resume this meeting. I believe Jeff, maybe you should make your announcement now before we open it up for oral communications.
Sure, thank you, Mayor, and I think what you were looking for was maybe an explanation of why we're here at this special meeting tonight. As the council and the public knows, at the last council meeting last Tuesday, Councilmember Ebner made a request for a future agenda item to discuss the city council adopting a resolution related to the recent events in Minnesota regarding George Floyd and a number of matters regarding racial justice and police policies and police activity. The council at that time, well, it was seconded by Mayor Bedar, and at the time, I jumped in and asked the council whether they would like staff to prepare the draft resolution for the council to review at next Tuesday's council meeting, and council directed that staff should prepare that draft resolution. So the interim city manager has been working on that resolution over the past week or so and has been receiving input from the community. And what I've been informed and as I understand it, the city manager has become uncomfortable with the process of drafting this proposed resolution and coming up with the content for the resolution and presenting it to council for, perhaps among other reasons, but at least one reason is that the city manager, the interim city manager, feels like he's getting into politics, a political issue, that's not necessarily directly related to the running of the city, but the International City Managers Association does have a code of ethics that all city managers certify that they will follow, and one of the tenets of that code of ethics is to, tenet number seven, is to refrain from all political activities which undermine public confidence in the professional administrator, I believe, and the city manager can speak for himself, but I believe that the city manager felt that by presenting any draft resolution, the public may feel that it is either too far slanted in one direction or too far slanted in the other direction, and that may reflect poorly just by presenting that draft, may reflect poorly on the city manager from one side or the other's perspective. So the mayor called this special meeting, as the mayor has the right to do, either the mayor or three council members can call a special meeting, to see whether the council would like to direct a different method for preparing the proposed resolution requested by Councilmember Ebner. So the meeting tonight is not about the content of the resolution, it is solely about the procedure for preparing the proposed resolution for next Tuesday, who will prepare it and how it will be prepared. A couple of options are that I, one option is that the council could choose two of its members to be on a subcommittee, those two members could work together to develop a draft resolution and bring it back to the council meeting next Tuesday for the council to review and revise however they would like and consider adopting. Another idea is that each individual council member could, or any council member that wanted to, could bring a draft resolution of their own to the meeting next Tuesday, and the council could decide which one they want to adopt or revise it in any way they wanted to as a group. I suppose another way to do it would be to continue to direct the city manager to prepare it, but there is the issue with the uncomfortableness of that and the code of ethics. So that's what we're here to talk to, to talk about tonight, it is, it is not the content, so we're hoping to stick to procedure both in the council's discussion and in the public comments tonight. So that is why we're here, I'm available for questions if you'd like to ask any, the city manager is also available for questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I first off want to apologize to Brad McKinney, our interim city manager. When this thing started a week ago and we started talking about it, there was a motion by Councilman Ebner, and I did second it, and then we started talking about it, and reality is what we, what I seconded, and I believe John was presenting, was getting it agendized so we could have this discussion. So when I found out, when it was pointed out to me by others, that we had kind of put Brad in a, in a kind of a bad situation, I did in fact decide that we needed a special meeting tonight so that we could get a course of action, move forward and have something to present, you know, next Tuesday night, that could be working, working. So we'll talk about that a little later, but right now, I would like to open up the oral communications, anyone wishing to address the city council on an agenda item. Under, under the provision of the Brown Act, the legislative body is prohibited from taking or engaging in discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. Members of the audience, do we have any callers? I'm being told at this point we have six callers. Okay?
Thank you for calling your live.
Hi, my name is Aster Walker, and I'm a student at San Dimas High School. The issue I have with my fellow students is that most of the Caucasians use the N-word freely, and I feel very uncomfortable walking around in the hallways. But the thing that makes it the most unbearable is that when I'm, hello?
We hear you.
Huh?
We can hear you.
Okay. But the thing that makes it the most unbearable is that when I mentioned it to my white teacher, she pretended she didn't know what was happening and said, I quote, "Black kids telling white kids that they can't say the N-word was reverse racism." That day, I just wanted my teacher to listen to me, to comfort me and help me feel like my voice mattered, but she wasn't educated enough to hear the problem at hand. Another example happened at PE this year. There were a group of kids playing around, and this boy proceeded to say the N-word so casually. When I confronted him, he said he didn't know it was so wrong and was just upset. I want to be able to go to school that educate students and about black lives. I want students to get a consequence whenever they are being racist, and I want to be able to live in an America where people accept each other's differences and care for each other. To fix this cycle of hatred against minorities and blacks, it would personally make me feel better if this speaker came to educate our privileged brothers and sisters dearly. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Thank you for calling your live.
Thank you, good evening, city council, good evening, Mayor, thank you for having me today. My name is Eric, and I'm a lifelong resident of San Dimas, and I wanted to let you know that I support this resolution. I've been following all of your careers for some time and your campaigns, and one of the things that I noticed each and every one of you said is that you would all represent all of San Dimas and not just a particular group, whether it be law enforcement, residents of a particular area such as Villa Verde downtown, not smaller, large businesses, but everybody. And I think that this is important because when I look around at the city council, none of you belong to communities that have been historically suffered prejudice and discrimination. So I do think it's incumbent upon you to listen to those that are part of these communities, to seek them out and to do your best to understand and to be their voice in this government. Some of you said at the last meeting that you didn't receive an invitation to the protest at San Dimas, but I also wanted to remind you at the same time, I looked at your social media, and I didn't see any of you ask if anything was going on or if you could be a part of it and to lead it. And I say this because I think it works both ways, and I think it's even more important that you not wait for invitations, but invite us to have a seat at the table with you and to fight for us. The residents who are most affected by racism and discrimination want this resolution, and I hope and I know you will hear them. And to that end, I also hope you are open to hearing directly from the community and allow the community to submit a draft resolution directly for your consideration or to provide input on those that you consider. And while I expect there might be disagreements about what is included in the final draft, I encourage you to listen and to understand why the community wants certain language and why it's important to them. The last point I wanted to make is that I know that some residents have expressed skepticism about this resolution and have said things like, what is the ROI, why do we need this resolution, all lives matter, and isn't this already covered in the Bill of Rights? I'm not going to comment on these specific pieces of feedback, but I will say is this, none of the residents who have said these things are black, and it is these residents that the resolution affects the most. So I wish you all the best of luck as you take this on, that you do the right thing, that you lead, and that you make us proud. Thank you very much for your time and for giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I look forward to the outcome of your discussion and your meeting. Have a great evening.
Thank you for the call, sir. Next.
Thank you for calling your live.
Good evening, city council and committee members, my name is Crystal Jones, and while I am a bit disappointed to be here yet again discussing this, I am happy that we are having this special meeting. However, contrary to how the city manager believes, I do not believe that this discussion has anything to do with politics as it is simply a human rights issue. As a parent of teenage daughters, I am often reminding them to consider the source. When they come home from school and they have a story to tell me, I ask them, consider the source and where are you hearing this from? I come to you today to ask the city council to do the same. As Beverly Tatum stated, Ph.D. stated, "We are not living in a post-racial colorblind society, but instead we are living in a color-silent society where we have learned to avoid talking about race." So I ask you today to consider the sources of any opposition to the passing of this proposed resolution, which would denounce racism and the murder of George Floyd. If racism was not a problem in San Dimas, then there would be no opposition to this resolution, and it would be met with praise, and it would result in endless positive for our city. As a resident of this community whom racial bias and discrimination directly affect, I am asking that you as elected leaders to consider the sources of information that you are getting regarding the city. It is not easy to stand here vulnerable recounting our painful experiences, knowing that the power to pass this resolution and to take community voices when creating this resolution lies with officials whom I understand, whom I have elected, but may not represent my particular beliefs or life experiences. I'm not asking you to fully understand what I have been through or what I have experienced, but I'm asking you to listen to what we are here to say. As adults, we all are aware that what we say truly matters, and with that, we know that the absence of recognition speaks volumes to what is being ignored. Do not let us, your residents who have experienced these things, be ignored. The expectations and values of leaders can change the tone of the conversations and of this community. We are looking to you to start the facilitation of these hard, awkward, very awkward and hard, but very necessary conversations to ensure that San Dimas is truly all that it can be for all of its residents. I call upon this council to not take the easy path, but to forge a new road which our children will be proud to say we paved for their generation. I thank you all tonight for allowing me to speak.
Thank you very much for your call, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next.
Thank you for calling your live.
Yes, hi, good evening, and thank you for taking my call. I am a resident of San Dimas, my name is Sabrina, and I am not calling this not as a political maneuver, but as something to say to all humans, to all people. We have the right to live in freedom, all humans, and I implore the city council of San Dimas to make the right decision. This isn't a political statement, this is a statement that supports human rights. All of us have equal rights. I am in support of San Dimas City Council adopting a resolution to denounce George Floyd's death, racism, and police brutality. And to that end, I think it's also important to say that I do believe not all police officers engage in police brutality, but it is important to make a stand against brutality. So gentlemen, thank you so much, and I know you will make the right decision. We live in a wonderful city, a wonderful community that should come together and embrace all of its community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next.
Thank you for calling your live.
Hi, thank you for taking my phone call. My name is Kent, I'm a resident of San Dimas, and I'd like to thank all of you for taking the time to consider the city council's resolution on a statement regarding George Floyd's death, racism, and human rights. I was uncomfortable listening to the city, explanation that the city manager felt this was a political issue. It is not, this is an issue of human rights for all of us. Unfortunately, these are times that may make people feel uncomfortable, but they're necessary to move forward. I'm certain you'll make the right decision, I think you should ask the community for direct input on the resolution, and you know, this will lead to a better world. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Thank you for calling your live.
Hello, hello, city council, my name is Crystal Jones, I'm seventeen years old, and I'm a citizen of San Dimas. I believe that the city should adopt a resolution, which is necessary, because a resolution, as a tour, as I heard someone say today, is a statement about belief, and by not accepting the resolution for George Floyd and denouncing systemic racism, you're instead saying that the aforementioned resolution is against our beliefs as a city, which I believe is not correct. Not accepting this resolution to me, as a community member, hurts because it feels to me as though I'm being ignored and visible and like I don't matter because these problems are, again, civil and human rights issues, and it makes my human rights issues feel like I don't matter because I'm a human in the black community. And because of this, I would like the community who directly affects, who directly affected by the problem, to help draft the resolution because we're the people who are hurt most by these problems that are happening in society. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next.
Thank you for calling your live.
Good afternoon, good evening, council and Mayor Bedar, this, my name is Patrick Jones. I'm calling about a couple of things. One, I listened to the council meeting, and what I didn't really appreciate is that Mr. Ebner made a request to put something on the agenda for the next meeting so that you guys could discuss it, and it was seconded by the mayor. That should have been the end of it. The, the reason you guys are in this dilemma right now is because the five of you should be telling the, the city staff what it is that you want in the, in the resolution. I believe that the city attorney should have stopped any discussion that you guys had last Tuesday, and, and put it on the agenda so that the five of you can say what you want to put in whatever resolution so that the staff can put it in there. That takes it out of city staff's preview and, and they don't, they are just mimicking what you're telling them to do. That's number one. Number two is that all of the complaints I keep hearing about are, seem to be directed at our school district, and, and I really think that, you know, and, and all of the things that we've heard are not very good, but the city, the city isn't the place to fix that. If the school is having a problem, then the school district needs to hear about it. I am not in supportive of a proclamation at this point because I don't know what you've got on it, and until we know what you have on it, nobody should be saying that they support it or otherwise because they have no idea what the five of you are going to decide. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Shows that we have one more.
Thank you for calling your live.
Thank you so much. My name is Ruth Luband, and I live here in the city of San Dimas. I want to mention that while some may find the resolution of this nature is unnecessary, the comments of last week's city council meeting speak otherwise. Issues with racial inequities are not news in San Dimas. However, recent events have shined, what can I say, a proverbial spotlight on our most marginalized communities, and the black and brown members of San Dimas have spoken. So to that point, a resolution is a belief statement, and as such, they are intended to provide a foundation upon which we can establish our guiding principles needed to govern effectively. If our city does not believe a resolution is necessary to denounce George Floyd's death as well as structural racism within our city, then does this mean our city council conversely believes racism does not exist, and the subsequent experiences of our marginalized committee also does not exist and is unimportant? If we, as the city of San Dimas decides that believing in racial justice or racial injustice is not our problem, then how can we foster positive relationships with our black and brown residents? So I propose to you, for the good of all of San Dimas, I ask you to consider a resolution that is both generative for the community and addresses the concerns that we have spoken about assaventually, that will encompass both our community as well as everyone else, that will allow us to address all of our concerns. Thank you for your time and your consideration. Ruth Luband.
Thank you, ma'am. We have one additional call?
Thank you for calling your live.
Hi, council, my name is Steve, and I am a resident of San Dimas. I'm calling because you have a really great opportunity here to show leadership and to unite this community. I think it takes a lot of bravery for I think it takes a lot of bravery for residents of San Dimas to call in, especially the younger generation, and they're doing that. They're being active and they are engaging with you. And I think it would be a shame not to listen to them and not to allow them to have a voice in creating such an important resolution. This obviously means a lot to them and it means a lot to the community because we're getting quite a few phone calls of support and I'm lending my voice to that as well. I think true leadership is when you lead from, you let the residents tell you what they need and you help them get there. And I'm hoping that you will do that and allow the community to have a voice in drafting this resolution. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, sir. It's being indicated that there are no more calls. We'll give it about thirty seconds to see what's going on. No additional calls? Okay, I'd like to just take this time to just pass on some information. I had an opportunity to speak to a couple of the school board members this last week immediately after. As everyone knows, I asked the city manager to forward a copy of today's meeting, or last week's meeting, over to the school district for comments. And as prior to this meeting, I had a conversation with Carl Coles, the superintendent of schools. And he's indicated to me that the school district is now aware, or they have been aware, and that they're going to, they're in dismay over this, but they've now formulated a plan to go forward and to have discussions. I also received an email earlier today letting me know that the school district had contact at the teachers' union and there's actually things happening. So it's going to involve the district as well as the parents, as well as the student body, and with the union. And they're going to be working on a comprehensive program to address these issues. So at this point, we'll just leave that up to the school district to handle their affairs. As we all know, most of the calls that we've received have been indicated that these are things that are school-related. We didn't receive very many calls concerning the outside of schools. So we're not, you know, going to dismiss all of that, but we are working with the school district to let them handle the school affairs. So with that being said, I think that we've heard the members of the audience, this will be a discussion of procedure for preparing a draft resolution regarding George Floyd, racism, equality, and justice. Counsel?
Well, I'll just start off and personally apologize to Brad and to staff. I do, and I have been, one, to be mindful of staff's positions as it relates to some of the things that go on. And it's not your job to be political. That's our job as electeds. And so for that, I spent time reading my good handy-dandy ICMA local government manager handbook and, you know, was reminded that in the city manager's code of ethics put out by ICMA, it does lay out that city staff essentially should refrain from all political activities which undermine public confidence in professional administrators. And then it got me thinking further of the position that the council put you and put staff in by having to work on this. Staff is supposed to be apolitical. You're supposed to do your job. And I understand that there are many members of staff that may have different life experiences and different feelings about this that may be different than even your own personal opinion. And so for that reason, that's why those guidelines exist, is to keep that out of that. And so for that reason, I apologize. I didn't catch it sooner. I echo the sentiment of the mayor that once that became a little bit more apparent, I think this was the right thing to do. And to that end, for the mayor and council, I like Jeff's idea about creating a subcommittee to council members. I'd be willing to volunteer to work on that, I guess with John, to come up with language that was agreeable and then bring something back only if it's agreed upon for council to consider. So that's my comment.
John?
Well, Dennis and I have talked about this, so I don't know if I could be on a subcommittee with another person besides Dennis. That's the only problem. Otherwise, you might remember with the DIA's arrangement way back when, again, I talked to Dennis, and that's why I never said anything all those months. Otherwise, I would have been more than willing to talk about it publicly, yeah, at the meetings and everything like that. So in this case, thanks, Ryan, for the offer. I don't think that particular one, that particular makeup can help.
I would be sure that that's going to make a difference in this particular case, would it? Jeff?
Well, I think what Councilmember Ebner is referring to is that he's talked with Dennis about the content of the resolution. Then if he talks to another council member about the content of the resolution, that that's three who are talking outside of a public meeting. So to take a conservative position, it would be prudent to not do that probably. I wasn't aware that Councilmember Ebner had been speaking with Councilmember Bertone.
Well, to that end, then, I guess could you share what you have then? And then if we wanted to go ahead and then move forward with that, with a new subcommittee, could we do that?
Say again, say again.
So if everything's disclosed up to this point on to where we've gotten or where they've gotten, and then we wanted to move forward, could we do that?
Oh, you know, that's a good idea. If it is brought out in public what they've discussed, then we could go forward with a new subcommittee. But I, of course, don't want, those two councilmembers are not required to disclose publicly what they have been talking about, of course.
But nothing's in writing, or is it?
No, there's nothing private about it.
Gotcha. All right. I guess the ball's in John's court, I suppose.
You know, I think that from all of the messages that we've received through email and also for the people that telephone, they want us to do some type of resolution. And I have the feeling that everyone on this council wants to do a resolution. So I don't think that's a question. I do like the idea of two councilmembers getting together. I would recommend the mayor and John. John because he's the one that brought this up and the mayor because he's had law enforcement background and I think he represents a point of view. And what I've heard from the mayor has been very good and he has a holistic viewpoint about this. Also, we individually, which I have no plan on doing, but write our own resolution where we could share with everyone and see how they feel about it. If one of us thinks that we could do a better resolution by ourselves, and I'm not opposed to that, but I think...
Well, I feel a little hamstrung because this meeting, I mean, originally, I wanted to have at the last meeting, under council member comments, a subject, a topic that we could talk about. I was told, no, you can't do that until we have an agendized item. Then I'm told that at this meeting, we're not talking about content. So I can't go on and on about all the points I want to have in the resolution because we're not talking about content. So I'm following the direction of the city attorney on all these matters and also the wishes of our interim city manager, which I totally appreciate and that's fine. But bottom line is, we need to have a resolution. We got calls from a lot of students and things about school last time, but A, they found out, or they, people who are using that kind of insulting and demeaning language learned that somewhere. And B, I don't know about anybody else, but I've heard about this kind of stuff going on in San Dimas directly from people who it's happened to. And they're not students. So I'm glad the school has taken the bull by the horns because that's a good place to start. But we totally need a resolution from this council on this issue. And it's got to be, without going into content, addressing the core problem. That's my thought. So I don't mind sharing some thoughts with Emmett on it. The other thing that some of the callers were saying, and I know this is afoot, but there's a community group of some kind out there trying to come up with some language. So I'm not sure how we fold all this stuff together. In one of my original emails to Brad, when I thought we were going to have input, part of it was about process. And that was saying that there's going to be a number of whereas clauses, there's going to be a number of resolved clauses, and I'd like to have them up on the board so that we could kind of, on the screen, so that we can discuss them. So we're coming in here really prepared next time. And it's like, you know, whereas one thing about George Floyd, whereas something else about human rights, whereas something about, you know, police reform, whatever they are, I have them up there so we can then have a discussion about things that are there. And of course, they could be on our agenda packet as well.
I'm not sure, though, Jeff, does a resolution have to have all the whereas? Is it possible just to have a resolve?
A resolution doesn't have to have, doesn't have to have whereases. They usually do, but it doesn't have to be.
So it could very well just read that there's an agreeable resolve by the city, by the council, basically condemning racism and brutality and violence and all the other things that we're talking about without getting into all the whereas specifics?
You could do that. And actually, way back when, in the first week after George Floyd's death, I was thinking along those lines of having just a powerful statement, not really a resolution. The resolution is more of an official thing the city does, and there's two parts to it. The whereas is kind of like, why are we doing these things? And so it'll be a number of things like that. And the action items, belief statements, or, you know, things we might want to do or tell people about what the council feels or wants to do is in the resolved part. So that's why you have the two parts. That's my understanding, the way the resolutions usually run, usually work. So...
I'll be perfectly candid with you, John. I think that the council probably, I would imagine, could get to a resolve in a resolution that probably puts the resolve out there that everyone's looking for. I think the contentious piece is going to be all the whereas. And so I think universally, I mean, every city council member here already made individual council member comments about this, denouncing it. Every single one of us did. So I understand the action, you're wishing to go down this path. I think that it's still a resolution. It's a statement by the city to get to that place. But I have an interest in working with you, to be candid, on making sure that everyone's represented in the resolution if there's going to be all the whereas verbiage.
I agree. You don't need the whereas. There are times, but I think what you just said, that everyone should be represented.
Yeah.
I agree with that. And that's all, if you wonder what John and I talked about, I only made one statement to John this afternoon, and that was, John, our law enforcement people on our... Our law enforcement people on our committee on this council, and they have a viewpoint and that should also be represented. And that's the only statement I made to John. And, but I feel, you know, 100% that we need a resolution. It has to come out strong against what happened, 100% against that. And I think everyone on this council is 100% against what happened. And in fact, I haven't heard anyone outside of this council say, hey, there's nothing wrong with what happened. So we all should be represented, and I think we could do it. And the whereas are fine, or they're not fine, whatever we come up with.
So then, and I know, Emmett, you, somebody suggested that you and I work together.
Well, you know, I hate jumping into there because of the fact that Ryan's offered to work with you, okay? You have the same problem with me because you've already talked to Dennis. So the only guy that's been the oddball out here is Eric. And, you know, maybe you and, well, no, you can't because you talked to Dennis.
No, I don't want to be on the committee.
Dennis has stated now publicly what John and Dennis talked about. So there's no Brown Act issue anymore with the subcommittee, with John on it.
Well, then what I stated was what I've stated before, that it has to come out strong against the killing of George Floyd, that it has to come out strong against, you know, and there's a lot of different words you can use, racism and all that kind of stuff.
What was that last thing you were talking in your mask?
I'm sorry. The head of mask is really a problem. There's a lot of ways, things you could put in there, but, you know, come out against racism and racism in San Dimas, for justice, respect, those kinds of things. And lastly, some kind of action item to be determined. I mean, without going into details about that. So I guess that's...
I guess I'm lost.
Those are the kind of things I talked...
That you're talking about.
Well...
I'm a little confused on the action.
Because we're not supposed to be talking about the content, you know? But I'm just trying to tell you the things that I told Dennis in general to get that all on the table. So that was generally what we, you know, I just made those kind of comments because I felt strongly about some of those things.
So just to touch on my kind of stance and priorities when it comes to this, obviously, we're five individuals on the council that all have different backgrounds and experiences that we can all bring to the table when it comes to this resolution. To me, in this instance, I think it's important that, particularly important, that we be the change that we want to see and ensure that the resolution embodies the values of San Dimas, that it's uniting rather than dividing, and that we all can fully stand behind it as a council. I think it's really important, no matter what, that this not be a four to one vote, that this be a unanimous five, zero vote to pass this resolution.
I agree. I agree.
I agree too.
You know, thank you, Dennis, for, you know, recommending me. But quite honestly, I believe that the best we can get out of this is to get a different vision. And the vision is John has been the driving force with this, okay? And I appreciate that. He brought it forward and we're going to move it. I'm going to ask Eric if he would join him and you two work together to bring something back next Tuesday night. That's what I'm going to ask. The rest of the council can vote against it if they feel, but...
Mr. Mayor, I think that's a good idea. I would support that.
Yeah, I'm supportive of that and I would give heavy thought to whether or not the whereases are necessary. I don't know that they're necessary. If the resolve, if the action is the resolve and we all universally agree on the tenants for which we would condemn in this city, which I think we do, then the whereases really serve no purpose. They serve no purpose because I think every single council member here has already said they condemn racism and violence, and that means to everybody, that means anybody, it means against police, it means against people, it means against each other, all of it. So, you know, I just ask that there's a lot of thought given to that. And I also ask that you really think about, you know, this is a statement from the city. That also means that I hope, depending on what your position is on this, that you go spend time at the sheriff's station and you talk to the deputies too about this because they also work for the city. And you're sending a statement out to the community that is something major. It is big. And I think that the sheriff's department, and I think we as the council members and we as a city, Brad, everyone, I think we all universally agree on condemning all of this nonsense. The racism should not exist in our community. Violence should not exist in our community. The other last part I would impart to you is something that was brought to my attention today, is how would we feel if a city council in another state was passing some sort of resolution based off of what happened millions of miles, thousands of miles away? millions of miles, thousands of miles away? There are elected officials that are dealing with some very difficult times. And there are some law enforcement and governors and other electeds and community members, people, all over herding. So, you know, this isn't a simple exercise of just scribing a resolution. It's not, and I hope it's not treated that way. I'm hope there's really some diligent effort done to both represent the people that we've heard express themselves so passionately about the issues they've experienced here, which I do feel needs to be addressed, and I wholeheartedly support, and I've said it a million times, and I'll say it a million more times. But I also think that, you know, to just pass a resolution, it, it's words. It should not be empty words. It should not be. So if there's an action thought of, I, I'm interested, I'm curious, you know? But at the same time, I hope that there's a lot of thought given to this, and I trust you guys will do that, do diligence. So thank you.
Well, Eric, what do you think?
I'm on board for that. The one thing that I would kind of touch on is that if we were to go without any whereas statements, that, that kind of touches on what would traditionally be an organization's value statement. And a value statement should be an actionable thing. It should be something that, you know, everybody strives to work toward every single day. You know, most organizations have a values statement, a mission statement, a vision statement, and a value statement, generally three separate statements. But, you know, it could be a very unique opportunity to either create or update a, a value statement for the city of San Dimas, I think.
That's interesting. And that, I think, could be something, a value statement is something I think maybe the city manager could work on perhaps for staff. I think that would probably be, we have a mission statement, I think, right? Do we have a value statement?
That's, we, we can look into that, something that we can bring, bring back to council. If that's what the council wishes, to make it more of a value statement instead of a...
No, no, I think there are two different things.
Two different things.
I think staff needs, we, we, council probably need to make sure, if I'm hearing what Eric's saying, is that staff should have a governing value statement, perhaps reflective of maybe some of the things that are brought forward through this action we're gonna take as the elected body.
Yeah, absolutely. I think within an organization, you know, the city administration, I, I would like to see a, you know, a, a value statement within the organization. But, you know, treating this resolution as a overarching value statement for the entire city and its populace might be a, a good perspective and, and an actionable thing for us moving forward possibly.
Well, we can work on it. Now, there, there is the other issue about community members wanting to either participate or offer alternatives or, or ideas. I guess we could talk about how to handle that, but I, I think they should... I, I think that, well, number one, we're not members of the community that is most affected by, by what's going on right now. So it's well and good for us to try to figure out what to say. But we really have to talk to those. Now, we can do it individually, you know, and just in our daily contacts or that kinda thing. That's one thing. But as some of the callers alluded to, there are people who are trying to get something together that the council could review. Now, I don't, that's why I was kinda liking the idea, and maybe we could talk about how to do that, Eric, but of having some choices, because we're gonna come to the council in a week, eight days, and we're gonna have a resolution. I don't expect it to pass exactly as is. There may be something that Ryan wants to put in it we just left out, we forgot. Maybe something that Emmett says, well, you know, you really need this in there, or that's not strong enough, or that's too inflammatory, whatever it is. So I expect our discussion next meeting not to be just a rubber stamp of what Eric and John did, but a real discussion, which brings me back to the community. So do we want to have like an alternative resolution just out there? I mean, they can always write a letter and, obviously included, we'd all see it. But we could either do that, or we could take some of their ideas, you know, if we know what they are, and discuss them and even talk with them about it. What, what do you think?
You know, John, I, I think that knowing this group, you don't have to worry about rubber stamping.
Good point.
Well, I, I'll say that I, I personally would rather trust that you two will do most of the deliberating. So whatever comes back here is as close to what you guys believe we would pass. And the reason for that is, is that I don't know that anything productive comes from the exercise of deliberating different versions. Other, a lot of people are gonna have a lot of passionate feelings about this, and that's what I think the subcommittee should work through, is you have a lot of people who, you have a lot of people that are speaking up. There's a lot of people that are not speaking up, and they, they are on all sides of this. And, and, you know, there, there, there is only one side that I've heard just like Dennis. Everyone condemns the actions that happened with George Floyd. Everyone that I've talked to does. Doesn't matter whether they're in law enforcement, teachers, whatever. I think that is universally agreed upon. But I do think that there are some people that are very passionate about certain choices, choice words, I guess is the way to put it. And, and there are others that are passionate about those choice words too. And so I think entrusting the subcommittee to work through all of that, because otherwise, what will happen is we will have that council meeting, and there will be versions of different resolutions. And we, as a council, I think, will then, it will completely defeat the entire exercise. Because if we can't sit here and have something presented that is sensible and has been well thought through, then we're gonna sit here and choose something that ultimately people in the community are not gonna be happy with. And to be honest with you, I want this, if we're gonna do it, to be a successful five oh vote, the way we talked about it, the way we hoped to get it, you know, if we can get there. And I just fear that if you have one, two, three resolutions up there, you're gonna strike words, you know, there's gonna, you're not agree, you're not gonna agree with this, I'm not gonna agree with that perhaps. And I don't think anything good comes from that with the community, to be frank. You know, I, I expect that you guys will meet with those people. And if we have to push at a council meeting so that there's enough time for you guys to do that, so be it, you know? But I mean, I think my personal preference would be you bring back something that is not half-baked, like we're talking, it's almost servant time. You know, I don't know. What do you think there?
I, I, I agree. I agree. And, and quite honestly, what I don't wanna see is words on a piece of paper that are hollow. I want them to mean something to everybody here. I want them to mean something to everybody in San Dimas, okay? Of all origins. I want people to believe that we care. And I think that's, that, that's the key. I could, we could have a town hall meeting, and we could have this opinion and that opinion. But you know what? We, as a collective body, have to be able to hold this pail full of water and believe in it. And that's what we want the community to do, to believe that we, we care. And I believe everybody up here cares. And like, like Ryan said, everybody here has denounced this. There is nobody on the, that, at least in this city that I've heard anywhere, who does, that says this was the right thing to happen. But there is also people out there who are concerned that because this happened, there has been a lot of things happening that really don't depict that of, of San Dimas. And, and quite honestly, with, I am happy as heck to hear people call in, the students, because those are the people that this is affecting more. Now, we're hearing, now starting to hear a little more from family members and stuff about how it's affecting their, their, their lifestyle. But the reality is, we are nothing unless we can be true to our words. And so I, I would like to see, just my opinion is to go ahead with Ryan and, and, or not Ryan, but John and Eric get together, figure out what to do the best with, okay? The one thing that Ryan said that I'm, I'm a little concerned about was that if all of us got these emails today, and a couple of the things that came about is that people are expecting that we need to make some type of progress on this. It seems like they feel like we've not made instant inroads to it, okay? And so now, if we delay it another two weeks after this meet, next meeting, I think that they're, they're right. It is, it's starting to be watered down, and that's not what we want. We want something that's definitive. That, that, that's my speaking.
We should have it by next week.
Yeah, it should be done. And quite honestly, I realize that both of you guys work, but...
Well, yeah, that means we, we, we wanna have it done by the end of the day, Thursday, so that it can get on the agenda, obviously. And, you know, what I'm hearing on, on this issue, and it's not the, the only one, of course, but it's the only one of this type that I can remember, actually. I'm hearing a lot of people speak and speak up who haven't spoken up before. So we may not have heard from them, and it's just welcoming to hear from them now. And I think they're representative of a lot of other people who are kinda thinking the same thing, like, hey, we're just normal folks, and we don't talk to the city council that much. And how does John or Eric or anybody up here know what we're thinking? So that's where I'm just gonna circle back one more time to the idea of somehow getting some input from the community. Whether they, you know, if, if we allowed them to just submit a resolution of their own, I mean, that, that's happened to us before. We've gotten resolutions. We usually don't accept them whole, you know, the whole, whole thing. But we could allow them to, you know, write a letter with a, their version of a resolution attached and have it on the, you know, as one of the things in our packet. Here's some communication from a, from the...
What, what about if they, if they do what they wanna do? They write whatever the resolution that they wanna write, and they submit it to you and to Eric to, to go through it, okay? And I'm not talking about, and see if there's items in that portion that you guys would like to, to look into? Because you could get, you could get several versions, okay? That may become pretty, pretty much repetitious or whatever. Words are, words hurt. Words mean things, okay? But I'm not gonna sit and, and vote, put my name on, and I wouldn't expect any of us, any of us up here to put our name on something that we're not willing, willing to live with, okay? And I'm completely, I'm, I'm totally okay if, if you have folks that, that are interested in submitting something to you and Eric to go through. I, I have no problem with that, and I'll let you guys come up with something. And, and, and there, there are also issues that you guys could talk to us about too. But, you know, bake this a little bit, bring it back, and, and let's discuss it.
I agree with the mayor. I like the idea that, you know, anyone that had any two cents about it, from my perspective, I'll direct them to email you guys. And I think the community, when we leave this meeting, should know that you are the two on the subcommittee. If they have any interest in piping up, that they sound off to you guys, and you guys discern through it. I mean, ultimately, we're gonna pass one document. That's it. Ultimately, it's gonna be the document we vote. So I mean, I entrust the subcommittee to filter through all those different views and come up with something representative of the community.
Okay.
Mayor, I wanna make one point of clarification. If you do want the resolution to be in the packet, then yeah, the deadline to get it to Denver would be Thursday night or Friday morning at the latest. But that's not a legal requirement. So if you need more time, you could even bring it into the meeting on Tuesday night. And of course, it's better to have it earlier for the rest of the council to read, though.
So how would this work, Jeff? Because that's, that's a good point, just knowing how we often work on these things. It's up to the last minute sometimes. I mean, say there are, it's still in the formative stages, but, but we've got some... It kinda goes back to what I was talking about before. We've got these ideas, and we're not, you know, quite, they're not quite polished yet or that kinda thing, but here's the things we wanna put in it. I mean, they're close, and we, would it be, would it be appropriate to get that in the agenda and then have like the finalized version available the night of? I mean, if we run into that kind of a situation?
Yeah, that would be completely fine. If the council's okay with that, we could take what you have on Thursday night, put that in the packet. Even if it's just a, you know, bunch of unorganized blurbs, we could, we could take that and put it in the packet on Thursday night. And you could have a more refined version on Tuesday night.
That will not be our goal, but that will be the possibility if it has to be.
I, I would like to see, from my side of it, I'd like to see a finalized document on that next Tuesday. I don't wanna keep pushing it down the road. I don't think that's, I don't think that's fair to the community, and I don't think anybody up here wants to see that, okay? The one thing I wanted to, to just state, I do not want this to be just an exercise. This is a life-changing thing that for many people are concerned. So it's, it can't be just an exercise. We gotta do the right thing here. And so that's just my opinion. I'm just one of five, but I wanna make sure that we all understand that this document means something, okay? Any, any further statements?
If I could just touch on to, I, I know a few of the callers earlier said that this shouldn't be a political issue, and I, I do agree that it shouldn't. But one thing that I think should be recognized is that social justice and race topics always do tend to be politicized, whether that's for better or for worse. That's another discussion altogether. But, you know, I, I definitely do understand the, the position of the city manager in this instance. And these things do tend to, whether they are political or not, be politicized. So I, I think it is important that, that the council come to the, you know, final conclusion on the verbiage of what we wanna put in this resolution.
Just, just a quick question, Jeff. When I look at the agenda, we have no, no ability for council member comments and/or any oral communications at the end. Or how do we stand on those two issues?
We don't have to hold those, but if you would like to have council member comments or another oral communications, then you certainly can.
I, I think it would be fair, fair. So I think we'll open up for any oral communications, and we'll give it about five minutes.
Association of Assistant District Attorneys wrote a resolution. I'm gonna give a copy of it to Eric to take, to keep. And I think it's something that both of you should look at it. It, it's very good, in my opinion.
Super.
I was hoping that we were gonna get a copy of that. I, I, you brought it up...
Yeah.
Last week, but I never, never saw a copy.
I think we might've got an email. Did you get that, that from the email?
I'm sorry, what?
Did, was that in our city email?
It wasn't in a city, it was, yes, it came a week or so ago.
I mean, we get so many things from so many organizations, but that was one I, I, that piqued my interest.
Okay. John, do we have any?
Mayor and council, just wanna let you know that 7:29 PM today, we received an email through the public comments email address. I'm here to read that off to you. It's from Leslie Leeming. My name is Leslie Leeming. I am a historian and computer science teacher at San Dimas High School. I am emailing requests, I am emailing requesting the San Dimas City Council formally accept and pass a resolution denouncing the death of George Floyd. This would speak volumes as to the city council being on the right side of history and in support of the denunciation of racism that still exists in the country and in this community, including the San Dimas High School campus. I look forward to the passage of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, city council, I should also note that we had ten emails that have been posted to the record, are posted on our website, and are on, in your packets that are on the dais tonight.
John, have we heard anything from anybody? Okay. You know, before we get off into the oral communications, if, if we have anybody, I'll wait till it's my turn to talk, okay? Okay, we'll, we'll start. Eric?
I get everything out that I wanted to earlier, so I think I'm good.
Well, I feel good about this evening. I think that we're all going in the same direction, which is a possibility that it would occur, but it really has. So that's all I have to say. I, I think something good's gonna come out of this.
Thank you. Ryan?
Yeah, I, I agree with Dennis. I think, I'm pretty excited, I think, where we'll end up. I think it'll be the right place. Everyone keeps saying we'll, we'll all do what we're supposed to do for the city, and I think we will. So I look forward to that. Last week, just on one other thing, I know a, a member of the community had some concerns about the face masks, and, you know, had made some comments about that. So I will say that I am also wearing a San Dimas Barber Shop mask again tonight, which matches, it's blue, it matches the color of my outfit tonight. But I will say to that end, that, you know, the face masks really have become, to a degree, a personal expression by a lot of people. Staff members, others, people out there really have embraced this difficult time and this...
people out there really have, um, embraced this difficult time and this public safety measure to be able to do it in a way, uh, that is both respectable towards each other, um, but also lends itself to some personal expression. So, to that end, uh, I will continue to, uh, support local business. And, uh, if any local business wants to bring me a mask valued at less than twenty-five dollars, I believe it is, is that right?
Oh, the gift limit?
Yeah.
Fifty dollars.
Fifty, okay. Well, we're not gonna get a fifty dollar mask. But, if you've got a mask for less than that and you wanna bring it COVID nineteen or not, I will wear a mask until I've worn everybody's mask. And, um, I still gotta be able to talk. That's the only condition. And, uh, can't have any sort of, uh, symbols of hate, uh, or, uh, anything else on it that would be denounced. Um, one community member, uh, uh, I don't know if he was joking or not, but, uh, he, uh, said if he'd wear a mask for Gil's tacos, I absolutely will wear a mask for Gil's tacos. So, if you wanna drop one off here at City Call Hall, I'll be happy to wear that too. Anyways, uh, that's all I got on that. And I look forward to the, uh, work. And thank you both for stepping up. Um, and thank you, John, for bringing it forward. I know, um, uh, it takes, uh, it's, it's an interesting position to take. It's a, it's a bold one. Um, but, uh, it's a necessary one. And, uh, thank you, Eric, for stepping up to help out as well. I think we're moving in the right direction.
Just look forward to working with Eric on this and see where we end up.
Super. You know, I would like to, uh, just bring one issue up and I think I would like to see it agendized either at the next study session or, uh, or whatever. I just wanna get some understanding. I've been on the council for like thirteen years, okay? And it's just, and I don't quite understand how, what motivates certain things, okay? Certain issues, the prior council said, we're not dealing with, okay? We're not getting involved in state, state or national issues, okay? So, in fact, nine months ago, we had an issue that was dealing with our state. And all of a sudden, we voted, you know, three vo, three votes came, that, no, this is a state issue. We're not dealing with it, okay? This is a national issue and it's very, very important. I just wanna know where the line is, what, where's the gray area that we're dealing with? Uh, it's either a policy that we don't deal with state or national issues and we only deal directly with what's going on with San Dimas and/or we look at all issues. And I don't, it doesn't matter to me one way or the other because they're all very important issues. So, whatever, but I just, you know, we can't have it one way or the other. We gotta decide how we're gonna address it, right?
So, if another council member agrees, we could bring back an agenda item, um, that looks at whether San Dimas has any adopted policies about that. I don't know if they do.
Yeah.
But we could also bring back, uh, other policies that other cities have on that issue and see if the council wanted to consider any of those policies as well.
Is that an issue that should be discussed at, say, at a study session, further, further discussed at a study session? Or is that an issue that should be agendized for a regular council meeting?
It could be either, maybe a study session would be a good spot for it.
Okay. Is anybody interested in them?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm happy to support the discussion.
We've, we've been all over the map on that.
Yeah, I just would like to get, and we may, at the end of this, still be all over the map. Because there's, there's probably always something that's gonna come up that doesn't fit this mold, you know? But, I mean, I just wanna have a, a general discussion about it so that we all are comfortable with, with the, you know, just say, hey, we don't care. We're gonna, we're gonna talk about everything. Or, you know, but I wanna be, I want the public to feel like they're being treated fairly. Because there are people who have called me about, you know, the last issue we had, okay, who said, why are you guys talking about this? You didn't wanna talk about an issue nine months ago. So, and, and that's it. Any further discussion?
You know, just on that sort of related topic, uh, the policy on getting something on the agenda. So, you know, I really appreciate, uh, I think there are a couple, at least a couple, if not everybody on the city council is always willing to second, uh, an individual. Cause I know we had this discussion where at one time, staff wanted three people to wanna do anything to get it on the agenda. And especially Ryan and I are going, what? You know, it's like, you gotta, gotta already wanna do it before you even talk about it. So, we, we agreed and I know the others have joined that, you know, if somebody wants something on there, doesn't mean we're gonna vote for it even. That's happened sometimes. And we're gonna say, yes, we're gonna, I, I want it on the agenda too. The, the gray area, in the past, um, I have asked that something be agendized under my council members' comments with a topic, so we could discuss it at that meeting. And that's what happened with this particular issue. And then, no problem, but I was told, you know, no, you can't do that until we go to another meeting where we ask about putting on the agenda and then we'll talk about it. So, when there's urgent things that makes, and it's okay if that's what our policy is, but maybe we should just nail that down in a study session as well, what our policy is about, like a council member wanting to put something under council member comments and just.
Well, John, I just wanna throw out, uh, I second your motion.
Yep.
Okay. My belief is I don't care who wants to have something put on the agenda. I don't know. I personally don't, and I'm not in favor of a second or a third or fifth or ninth. If somebody wants it, then we should be discussing it. That's how I feel. But, once again, I'm only one of five. But, the reality is.
I like that idea.
Uh, you know what? If you want it on the agenda, bring it forward. Tell us about it and let's do it. Unless you feel you need a second or third or.
I've always wanted the one person, but, I mean, maybe we should discuss that at a meeting.
Yeah.
And make a policy on it or something like that.
All right. Any further? I, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Moved.
All in favor, say goodbye.
Bye-bye.